Until the next week.
Moore.
We don't have a choice.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Aye, here.
Waters.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Larry Finley and Rick Alder, please, come to the mic.
Hi, Bob.
Well, yeah, well, you're not getting paid anymore for the number you put. We have a commendation that reads, whereas the need for fighter and bomber pilot training began after the military attack on the Imperial, by the Imperial Japanese Navy Air Service upon the United States against the naval base at Pearl Harbor in Honolulu, Hawaii, whereas construction of the Sioux City Army Air Base began just three months after the bombing of Pearl Harbor and the United States entry into the war and was completed in 1942, and whereas the base specializes in advanced training and was the last stop for many air crews before being deployed overseas in heavy bombers such as the B-17 Flying Fortress, the B-24 Liberator, and the B-29 Super Fortress, as well as aircrafts including the P-51 Mustang and the T-6 Texan, and whereas the Sioux City Army Air Base is now known as the Sioux Gateway Airport and Brigadier General Bud Dayfield, and has been in continuous operation for military, private, and commercial aviation since 1942. Now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, do hereby recognize the 80th anniversary of Sioux City Gateway Airport and Brigadier General Bud Dayfield in Sioux City and commend this observance to all citizens. Need to present this to you, and you guys make a few announcements about what you've got going on out there so that everybody understands. We've got a big week planned for us, so.
Well, if anyone was out and about today, you would have seen the B-17 and the T-6 trainer coming into Sioux City, and they'll be here all week through Sunday, so stop down by. We're down at the Rev Aviation Hawthorne South for those airplanes, the T-6 and the B-17. They're open for ground tours, as well as anyone who would like to purchase flights. And I know, Rick, we've got some free flights for the young eagles, right?
Right.
So we'll have pilots there, and we have a pancake feed and educational seminars on Saturday morning. So we invite everyone to come down and enjoy.
What time does that start on Saturday, Larry?
Starts at 8:00, Saturday morning, yes. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go to interviews. The Historic Preservation Commission, Elizabeth Dooley-Hope. Tell us why you want to continue to serve.
Hello. So I just found out that I was doing a partial service from last year, and I'm really enjoying being a part of the commission and contributing to the city, just learning about the architecture and learning about some of the past history and why we need to continue putting money into restoration of downtown especially.
Questions?
Thanks for making the application.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really enjoying it.
How do you feel like the city's doing if you had to give us a, like, 1 to 10 score?
Oh, 10.
10?
Completely, yeah.
Good. I think so, too. I really feel like that's happening.
And it was away for a long time, and I came back. I lived in New York for 20 years. So to see it come full circle is really beautiful.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that you served a partial term, and so you've got some experience on it. And I like that you're a photographer, and you brought that up, too. I feel like that is definitely an area where we could use the benefit of having some of that exposure of some of our historical locations, because we have a lot of really neat architectural structures around here, and a lot of exposure to those, I think, is important.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Hebert. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve and...
Just a quick note. It is pronounced "A-Bear."
Sorry.
Happens a lot. No, I am an architect, fairly new to the Sioux City. I worked with Dale McKinney before he retired, and we've worked on quite a few of these historic projects. Went to school, but everyone's like, oh, what kind of work do you want to do? I think I'm going to do historic work now, because I really enjoy it.
Good.
The Motor Mart, and we're working on the Benson Building, so I also have some photography experience as well, so.
How many people you have in the office now?
Just in our office, we have about five, but it merged with an office in Sioux City. So overall, I think we're at about 30, between four offices.
Good for you.
Here in Sioux Falls, Minneapolis, and Fargo.
That's impressive. Great.
We're really growing. It's really exciting.
Mm-hmm.
I like that you have experience with historical reenactment, too, or the treasure for... And I thought that was really, a really neat thing to bring up.
It's an odd hobby, a little odd in it that I was, my family was into it. Most people find it in college, but I mostly put that on there as experience when it came to the treasure. I recently, since I moved here, I picked up treasure. The local group, we've really suffered during COVID, but a lot of people just, we can't get together. So a lot of the local groups have really suffered, and they don't have enough officers to even run their groups, so I picked up their local office to help run that group. And that's been interesting, to see the other, sort of the other side of the reenactment.
Yes, and I think that benefits, as far as historical structures go, too, because it teaches you a little bit about some historical building practices and things like that that are not so much followed anymore.
A lot of how, like, sort of nonprofits move money, so.
Well, thank you for applying. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Human Rights Commission, Sherri Martin. Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve here, and before you do, though, I would ask you, would you be, this is for me only, not for the council.
Okay.
Would you be willing to resign your other position? Because I think these two have some overlap a little bit, and I'm not, I don't think it'd be fair to have a person serve on both. That's my personal opinion. They can all disagree, but I just, I want to ask that question ahead of time.
I would be willing, but I would like to stay on there until a replacement was found.
That's, that would work that way anyway, so, yeah. Okay, go ahead. Tell us why you want to serve on this one.
I just love Sioux City. I love the community, and I try to advocate for the community and educate community members every chance I get.
What are some, oh, sorry. What are some ways that you feel that your presence on the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee and on the Human Rights Commission, some benefits that you'd have between the two, being able to serve both capacities or your experience in the past?
I actually attend the Human Rights Commission events any chance I get to go to those, as well as the events hosted by Semhar, and there's been a lot of times that the information would be good for both committees to have, so I think there's a lot of useful information. I know that the Human Rights Commission had some forums from different segments of the community, and issues specific to that segment of the community were discussed, and I think that would have been great for Inclusive Sioux City to be a part of, so I think there's a few ways that they could overlap.
You've got a lot of community involvement and a lot of qualifications, and I was just wondering, is there something that you feel like makes you uniquely qualified for this?
I think my ability to remain impartial would be a big bonus.
Good answer. Well, thank you for applying.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Board of Adjustment, Andrew Gleiser.
How are you guys doing today? I'm applying for the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning. I sit on that, those boards already. It's a gender-balanced board. We currently don't have that balance. We're short a female commission member, so until we get that filled or, or not, I'll stay on that position, stay in the commission until that gets filled in, because with all our city boards, it's hard to make sure we have quorums and people available, and if you enjoy my work there.
But if we don't have female applicants?
Correct.
Then what do you do? I thought we had, that we could appoint if there weren't any coming forward.
Correct. If a reasonable time period has passed and we're unable to fill out with the gender that they're looking for.
How long have we been waiting?
I think we've got three months.
The three-month timeframe.
If nobody comes forward in three months.
Correct.
Then I'll stay on the planning and zoning, and if somebody comes forward after that three months, I'd be willing to step down.
Are you enjoying it?
Yes, I do enjoy it.
Good. Thank you.
I've sat on different boards for a lot of years now, between Parks and Rec and Housing Trust Board. I sit on the Housing Trust Board again as a planning and zoning member.
Right.
Just happy to do my part.
And you mentioned the quorums. It is hard with everybody's busy schedule, and sometime there were a member short or two to, you know, have enough, to have an effective meeting and let alone a quorum, so thanks for doing that. That's great.
I really appreciate that you have a lot of experience and that you're willing to serve, even if somebody else eventually does apply, and, you know, you essentially lose your spot so that we can maintain that gender balance. That's, that's very kind of you.
It's important to have if, as long as we can have it, so, you know, other than that, it's...
Well, we're very fortunate to have you, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good to see you.
I thought the one resignation was reversed.
It was.
So that...
One was, yeah.
Adds back in.
Yes.
A female does not, doesn't?
Yes. We still are short. It is a...
Seven-member?
Seven-member board, and at this time, we only have two females serving.
Oh, including the one.
Yes, so we are short.
Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda items 3 through 9B, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes ask for a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. Remember, you'll be limited to three minutes. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
3 is a reading of the City Council minutes of July 11th and 12th, 2022.
Mayor, I didn't have a chance to call the clerk's office, but on the July 11th minutes, item 26, where I abstained due to a conflict of interest, I don't believe I made a second on that one. Motion by Scott, seconded by Moore. I don't, I don't think I seconded that if I was going to be abstaining.
We'll correct it.
Will you please? I'm sorry I didn't get ahold of you before the meeting, but I just didn't have a chance. So it's item 26.
4 is a resolution accepting the mini-pitch system improvements donated by Kick It Forward at Lee Ferguson Park. 5 is a resolution, well, I got a question. Where's that going to be at at Lee Ferguson Park?
Mayor Council, Angel Wallace, Sioux City Parks Recreation Manager. That's already installed. We installed that last summer.
Oh, that deal.
This is just accepting it.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's already done. And then we have another one that's going to be installed in Riverside, and that was approved.
That's what I was, okay.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. 5 is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area August 13th and 14th for Jolene's Birthday Celebration. 6 are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Badger Daylighting for West Well Cleaning Debris Disposal and Vactor Truck, Vac, that must be vacuum truck services at the wastewater treatment plant lift station. B is a resolution approving a second amendment to the development and lease agreement with Oracle Aviation. C is a resolution approving a contract to L&amp;L Builders for Rivers Landing Elevators Upgrade Project. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Sioux City Engineering for the Singing Hills and Prestige Boulevard Emergency Sanitary Sewer Repair Project. E is a resolution approving renewal option number one for the contract for odor control services with USB technology. F is a resolution awarding the contract to RP Constructors for the Sioux Aviation Center Site Improvements Project. 7 is purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Carl Chevrolet to purchase four Chevy all-wheel-drive Tahos. B is a resolution canceling the purchase order issued to Brent Tag Great Lakes for Quagulate at, for the water treatment plant.
I have one question on that one. This is actually more for Spiro. Sorry. Forgot to ask you this earlier, but I was just curious, because this, I mean, it seems like it's not going to be that much of a price jump, but really it does add up quite a bit. And so this company had bid what they thought was a spec product. Really, it turns out it wasn't a spec product, and now we're having to go with the next higher bidder. Do, and I meant to ask you this earlier, but do we keep records of companies that maybe bid improperly so that we know that for future, if they return lowest bid to save us from the headache?
We, Spiro, we're all this purchasing manager. We do keep track. We also try to encourage vendors to bid, too. I can think of, in the past, we've had a couple of issues with vehicles, and I know there has been a vendor in the past that was excluded for a couple, for, I think, two years, but that's been a while since that's happened.
And what was, I mean, we included the proper product on the spec and everything. They just bid something completely different on accident?
Or I could probably answer that question, because I know they dealt with the company when they came out to do the chemicals.
Red, that's Utilities Director. Yeah, they, they bid an incorrect product. It lacked the contents needed for the product to work effectively. They didn't make us aware of that until we had already ordered the first load, so they also failed to mention that we'd have to use a lot more of this product to get the same effectiveness as the current product, so.
That seemed like quite a bit more.
Yeah.
So thank you for catching that, because that will save us quite a bit of money in the long run. Thank you, then.
Mayor, could I go back and ask a question on 7A, Carl Chevrolet of Spiro? I noticed in your write-up that you sent bids, bid request, to 15 vendors, and you received the one from Carl Chevrolet, and one other vendor submitted a no bid and said they were unable to get new Chevy Tahos at this time. Is that, is that going to be a problem, do you think, going forward?
What we were told with this particular, the Carl Chevrolet does have the state bid for this item, and what we were told was that Carl Chevrolet basically went out and was able to secure X amount of vehicles, and what they said was is that they'll sell them to whoever puts their name in to get them. And I don't know if the other vendors were even able, it sounds like they were not able to get them because the window was so short.
Is that, is that a state price then, or, I mean, is that a competitive, is that a competitive bid?
State price, right. And we did open up to other vendors, hoping, you know, giving the local vendors a chance, but from what it sounds like is they were not able to get vehicles.
I do know, I did speak with one vendor who said that the fleet pricing had closed on that specific model before, before they were able to even entertain a bid. So they received the bid request from us, and they weren't able to purchase any, because it was only, the selling of that particular model was open for a day, and it was after that day it occurred.
Thank you.
3 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to High Chem for Quagulate at the Water Treatment Plant. 8 are applications for beer and liquor license. 9 are boards and commissions and committee minutes. See the list. Do you have any questions? Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, we'll vote. Passes 4 to 0. Mr. Waters is absent. I'm going to move 10 to defer for one week because Mr. Waters is absent, and he needs to be here to cast the third vote. Is there a second to that?
Second. O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to 11, which is a resolution approving a development agreement with Mid-America Energy in connection with the new Mid-America Service Center. Somebody will need to move that.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second?
Anyone to be heard?
Rick Bertrand, 1501 PB Street. Is this the resolution part of it, the sale of the dirt, or is that the next agenda item, guys?
Temporary slope and grading easement would be the next item.
So which is which? Is it separate, Nicole?
The development agreement mentions both, but specifically this item that we're talking about is the dollar per cubic yard.
So the dirt, this, this, this is the one with, on the dirt itself?
Correct.
On that? Okay. The, so I'm in the right place. The 1501 PB Street, Rick Bertrand. I was in here a couple weeks ago, and we talked about the property that's at, that's in discussion here. There's a bigger picture that's going on here, and I'm not sure I'll keep you wanting to get into tonight. I guess my first question I have with Alex being gone, is this a deferrable object? Are you guys going to vote?
No.
You're going to vote?
No, Dan is.
You're going to vote?
Well, it depends on, quite candidly, it depends on your remarks. I thought you were...
Yeah, I might use you as my attorney, so.
Yeah.
So probably it is probably a deferred item for you, so.
Yes.
At this point, should we defer it another week, or what do you want to do?
I think I need to now. I think I need to.
Okay.
Same.
Move, then we'll...
And just for clarification, both items would, I would recommend that the next 11 and 12...
11 and 12 deferred to next week?
Deferred as well, because they're both connected.
With Alex being gone.
They'll need to withdraw.
Another clarification, Nicole, could I have, is if on, so next week, if there's three here, does it have to be all three? That is, so it has to be a majority of the present? So if, if all five members are present, it has to be a 3-0?
It'd be 3-0-2.
But it would have, so if, let's say Mr. Scott was absent next week, would it have to go, could it go 2-1-1, or it'd have to go 3? Is it members present?
It's always got to be 3.
Always got to be 3.
3.
Okay.
Yes. There are a few other limiting circumstances, but not a situation that we would have. It would need to be 3.
Okay, so that would, that would then defer a week. That would be number, item number 11, 12? Just 11 and 12?
11 and 12.
That's all.
But Rick, so you have concerns on both 11 and 12 on...
I have concerns on both 11 and 12.
On the site.
I do, on the site.
Yeah, then I would need to abstain.
Okay, great. We'll see you next week. Thank you.
I'll withdraw. I'll make a motion to defer 11 until next week.
Second?
You can do 11 and 12.
Can I do 11 and 12?
I would prefer 7.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shaner? Shaner?
Oh, I got attorneys.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Now, would you like to do 12?
I'll make a motion to defer 12, too.
Second?
Until next week. Sorry.
Scott?
Had to make the lawyers happy, did you?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
13 is a hearing and resolution adopting amendment number one to the amended and restated combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal plan property at 620 Floyd Boulevard and 901 Fifth Street. I'll move that.
Second?
Hearing's open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 4 to 0. Mr. Waters is absent. 14 is a resolution approving acknowledgement and consent between Pennsylvania Pacific Entertainment and Churchill Downs for the sublease of Kirk Park Lot, Parking Lot at 114 to 117 Third Street. Staff will request a motion to delete this item per city legal. I don't know how it got on, but you got all those attorneys. Somebody should have caught it before today, but I'll move to delete.
It was a request for a change that came in today.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Making sure.
And that was moved to delete, not defer, correct?
Yes.
I'll second that. Moore?
Staying, conflict of interest.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Citizen concerns. Are there any citizens to be heard? Please come forward, state your name and address. Limit your remarks to three minutes, please.
Andrew Lassick, Sioux City, Iowa.
Address.
723 Jones Partners.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to read this quickly. So I skateboard everywhere here in town, and I find the city to be a lot better than the previous year. I want to start off by saying that I'm proposing an interactive entertainment learning center created using high arts and high standards. Growing up in the Black Hills, there's a sense of pride of being from where Mount Rushmore was carved out. It still carries on, and there's a living pride for those working on Crazy Horse. The type of center I'm proposing is not just a salute to history, but also language, thus having far reach. Not far back, we had a group from Rapid City do a history report on downtown Sioux City, which was bar life and bar after bar, which was a lame presentation. I am grateful. I do not see current downtown Sioux City following a course that has, that was partially conjured up. What were those kids even doing here? Last night, every nook and cranny of downtown was occupied by homeless. I'm not complaining on a single one of them was rude. I worry that council may be out of touch and wants to jail these individuals. My proposal could provide housing for many of these individuals, being financially and onsite housing. I believe, I believe a lot of people feel similar as to me, that the new jail has like a sense of feeling diabolical, and, and personally, I feel that the seeming pride over it is sheer repulsive. An interactive entertainment learning center, I would like this to be viewed as a necessity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You.
Anyone else to be heard?
Rick Bertrand, 1501 PB Street. I want to hold this till citizen comments, but I do want to extend the invitation to come out, considering what's going on on the site. Several of staff have come out and taken us up on the invitation to actually get out and put the eyes on the site. I'll extend the, also the invitation to Mr. Councilman Waters. I don't think we can get more than two, though, isn't it, more than, so if we do it individually, like I said, I'd be extremely flexible to take you out, give you the 15-minute tour. We can actually look at the dirt we're talking about moving, how it plays into the city property, and I think it would really help us in the discussion next week. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Marilyn Twin. I live at 4622 Harrison Street, and I am the townhouse. And I am the townhouse that is next to the townhouse that had the 58 pythons removed last Monday. I'd like to submit photos to you that I have taken. And I would just like to share with you what my life is like now. Parker Moose still has 100 to 300 mice and rats in his garage. Friday night, we had another corn snake sneak into our garage. We have caught several mice and rats in our garage. I am fighting to keep those rodents and the snakes out of my house. So my life today. We have spent hundreds of dollars so far in mitigation. Thank goodness for Officer Boyer, because he did obtain that search warrant to remove those. The 58 pythons were in the two bedrooms upstairs, and the one bedroom is adjacent wall to my grandchildren's room. And the thought that they were in there. My grandchildren are no longer. I don't want them there. I'm fearful that something's going to happen. Mice and rats can eat through drywall. The value of my home has now decreased. No one is going to want to buy it today, tomorrow, two years or five years. Our neighborhood is one of those neighborhoods, kids don't play on Nintendo. They are out in the streets in the night yards playing. It's wonderful. Now I fear for their safety. What if that python would have gotten out of our garage and wrapped itself around that neck? Parker has a six-month-old baby girl. I've already called CPS, but she is living in those conditions. We are not zoned for commercial use. He has openly admitted to selling these animals out of his home. I have talked to neighbors who have bought them, and he intends to open up exotic shops someday. I have no problem. If that's what you want to do, don't do it in a neighborhood, especially in a townhouse. The city has rules that you can only have two dogs. Why is it acceptable to have 100 to 200 mice and rats in your garage? They all carry diseases and infections. If this can happen to me, it can happen to anyone. I ask people, would you like to live in my home with me? I don't sleep very good at night anymore. I turn the lights on whenever I walk in any room. I would have to suck it up if he had a few rats and mice and some snakes. I get that, but this is an outrageous number. My husband and I lead a quiet life. I'm on the New Perspectives Inc. board for autistic. I've been a cost volunteer for almost six years. I try to give back to the community. We lead a very boring life, but that life is gone now. I've worked at Great West for 30 years.
I do need you to kind of wrap it up, okay?
I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
I just need your help. All I want is the mice, the rats, and there's still 30-plus corn snakes removed, removed, and that's all.
Where are we on this? I thought we removed everything. We didn't, obviously.
I'd have to follow up with PD.
Well...
I can do...
I'm only one vote, but I already made my point pretty clear in the paper. I'm not for any of this stuff. This is ridiculous, and no neighbor, we had this with the rats up in the, up in Leeds. Neighbors should not have to live like this, so I don't know... So I don't know, if we haven't, then I think, again, I only have one vote.
It sounds like a commercial.
Taking everything out of that house. That's just wrong. I, you can't have neighbors have their property diminished because of your responsibility, and that's what this is. There, I, I know I could get sued. I know that you'll be going to court for me, but I would think that this is just terribly wrong.
Thank you.
We'll see what we can do, okay? Thank you for coming. Mike, you'll follow up on that, please?
I will. Yep, I'll follow up. Please, chief.
Randy Giles, 33676 South Ridge Road. I'm with you. We, animal control is not equipped to handle snakes, so even with the thought of a exotic pet store opening within our city limits, what happens when someone doesn't want their animal anymore? Where do they bring it? I guarantee you, as, as skilled as Cindy is, she's not trained in snake handling, and she has the snakes right now and a bunch of mice. This also opens up the door for street, for stricter breeding ordinances. Cedar Rapids and Snory County have some really great ones. I'm happy to share them with the council. You know, and it also goes to where did he get these snakes from? Where are they sourced from? As a city, we have got to be diligent about making sure that the animals that we're adopting out or selling to our, our communities and our neighbors, that they're healthy, that they come from reputable places. It's just the way we would like our city to be. So I'm a huge animal lover. I know that Cindy is going to, depending on what the outcome is, will try to get the snakes to rescues and the, and the mice. The Humane Society of the United States has also offered to assist with placing the snakes in rescues. I don't think these snakes should go back to the gentleman who had them. They're, they're, the boas are not technically listed on the state law, but they still are dangerous snakes. There's a ton of cases in Indiana where people have been murdered, have been killed by the snakes. And again, this is, the snakes aren't conducive to this weather, so if they get out, it's not even good for the snake. So I think we need some stricter breeding ordinances. I know that animal control supports that. I think we need to not return the snakes. I think we need to make sure that if we, be very careful when we open up a pet store in our city limits. And I'm just so sorry that this has happened, and I, and I'm really sorry for the snakes and the mice too. So, that's it.
And let me follow up with one other thing that really irritates me. And this should, you're, you're in a bad situation, but when somebody goes on the news and said they called me, but I didn't talk to him. You guys have called me in the past. I return phone calls. If you want to talk to me, leave a message. I am busy, but I return phone calls, and that irritates me when somebody wants to make it act like I don't care. I don't care that they have snakes, but I, I certainly would have talked to him and told him exactly the way I feel. And that, that is upsetting to me because I'm pretty good about returning phone calls, even when I don't give you answers that you may want. I'm at least going to return the phone call, and so to put that on me last week irritated me even more than the snakes, quite frankly, just because. But anyway, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I don't know what the answers are. I guess we can work on it, but I don't want this happening in any neighborhood again.
I agree.
Randy, could you be so kind to send legal department those ordinances you're referring to?
Yep.
I know we can, I know you can.
Oh, no, I'll get them.
You have, you have access to them, but.
Yep.
Just to make sure we have the ones you're looking at.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard?
My name is Mark Solheim. I live at 2909 Garretson Avenue. While we're on this subject, I was under the impression that the gentleman with the snakes was going to be here asking you folks to look over the animal ordinances that you have. And I was going to somewhat agree with him. There are a lot of people in Sioux City that are breeding animals of different kinds, and they're doing that, you know, to make money. I was on the internet this weekend and I saw that these little ball pythons that he was selling sell for about $500 apiece. There are people in Sioux City that are breeding dogs and cats. They're breeding pit bulls. They're breeding German Shepherds. They're breeding cane corso's. And some of them are being bred for fighting. Most of them are being bred for income. And I'm wondering how much sale tax have you folks received from those sales? A pit bull will sell for around $500. A German Shepherd will sell for 750. A cane corso will sell for over $1,000. And that's going on right here in Sioux City, and they're just pocketing the cash. They need to be, at the very least, they need to be collecting sales tax. Six cents goes to the state and you get yours one cent, but they need to be reputable. They need to be licensed. And I would ask that if the city council is going to look at these animal regulations, these animal ordinances, that they look at this breeder issue, that breeders be licensed and inspected, and they of course collect your sales tax and are legit and up and, up on, up aboard, you know? So that was my, my suggestion.
Thank you.
Mark, do you think that these breeders that you're seeing, they're just in private residences where, like a husband and wife, or, you know, they have the dogs in their garage or in their basement or whatever, and they're just turning a?
Those are exempt.
Right, that's what I mean. Is that what you're seeing on Craigslist, or do you feel like it's actually like they have kennels in a professional setup?
These flyers at various stores, grocery stores and Baumgartner, you see them on their bulletin boards. There's, they're offering their dogs for sale.
I've seen that.
Yes, we all have, I'm sure. And I have, on walks in my neighborhood, I have taken pictures of a cane corso that has been bred, and it is obviously nursing a lot of pups. And although, and I've turned that over to Cindy because there's a question about excess pets in that house. But I just lost my train of thought.
Well, we're talking about whether they were a professional operation or trying to be one?
They were fly-by-night operations. Last, was it two weeks ago when you had the ordinance set about leaving animals in cars that were too hot?
A while back, yep.
Animal Control was late to this meeting because they were investigating an incident that, of a couple deaths of cane corso's that were chained up outside. And when the, the owner of the property visited the house, he found a puppy mill going on in the basement, and then it mysteriously disappeared. Iowa has the worst record in the nation for puppy mills. Absolutely the worst. And it would be nice if we could do something about that and make this just a better place to live.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Mr. O'Kane?
Ah, so.
What'd you do all weekend? I'm excited to hear.
We are still down to one car in my household, so it has been a lot of juggling.
I have a lot of cars. You just.
Oh, I know. Couple, couple of events that are coming up during our joint meeting at the Art Center, unfortunately. There's going to be two events happening at the museum. There's History at High Noon, the Five Tribes of Nebraska, and then also the Community Speak Out for Housing. Both of those are taking place at the Public Museum at noon and 12:30 respectively. So two awesome events on the same day, at the same time, and I'm hoping I can catch the tail end of at least one of them after our joint meeting. And then I, I'll leave everything else up to you. Julie?
Makes, but it makes me wonder if we don't have with, internally, we don't have a community calendar.
Okay.
Of events, because you're saying there are three meetings on that day that we have.
Well, one is a council meeting.
It's our joint meeting with art.
I thought you mentioned three.
Yep, joint, our joint at the Art Center, and then History at High Noon.
Just, just an idea.
But then, that's like, what day is that? Thursday?
Thursday, yeah. They're just all right in that chunk of time. Happens more often than you think.
Some people will be absent for all of them. All right, what I want to talk about today is the detours around town. If we talk about the detours, I know I see a lot of complaints on social media, but detours are the thorn in our side to get the roads and the infrastructure where we want it to be. So they're a pain. I was trying to get grandkids from here to there, and I know very well where these detours are, and I ran into several of them and I had to kind of backtrack. So, you know, we can't apologize for detours. We can apologize for the inconvenience, but they're necessary, so we just need to tolerate them through these good months that we have to complete our construction. And I'd also like to talk about the water levels here in Sioux City. We are not out of water, but we are trying to take a voluntary procedure to bring awareness to everyone. And I saw a lot of negativity about I'll water whenever I want to, I pay my own bill, et cetera. And yes, you do, but we're trying to stay ahead of it so we don't fall into a water emergency. So we're asking that automated sprinkler systems, irrigation systems, they be set to no more than every other day, or excuse me, odd and even days according to what your house number is. So we're going to have no watering on Mondays and then do the odd even according to your house number. And it's not to say that if you have new trees that we don't want you to water them. I know some people are concerned about new plantings and new landscaping. You can run your hose and still, you know, save those, but if your lawn does turn brown, it'll turn green again when the water comes back. So please, you know, give that to some thought. Think about what's best for the city as a whole. But I will tell you that our water superintendent sees those water levels, pull the wells down in the mornings when everybody's sprinklers are running, and that's not a good time to run the sprinklers. So we're just asking everyone to do it on a voluntary basis to try to stay ahead of it before we end up with an emergency. I don't mean to be doomsday, but it's hot out there and.
Someday we may have.
Right, we just have to be very careful.
Where we have to ration, so.
Right, right.
Try to do it without.
Stay ahead of it, yes.
Okay, Mr. Moore, what do you have for the good of the order today?
I have the pleasure of making sure we see a lot of people at the Rivercade parade.
Yep.
On Wednesday, starting at 6:30.
Will you be throwing candy beads? People, public really wants to know that.
No, I know.
I'm in charge.
We have candy to throw, but I mean, at 100-degree weather, I mean, we, you know, it would be some oars. I mean, I think we need to maybe look at that because if they don't catch them in the air and they hit that hot pavement. There'll be.
You could put them on ice ahead of time.
That's another great idea.
That's a great.
Thank you. I move we adjourn.
Second?
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.